So you're on the side of the table.
Nope, it's going floating. Don't face walk.
I thought it maintained your.
Okay.
Ready? All right, here we go. Call this town of violated select board meeting for Tuesday, July nineteen, two thousand twenty-two order will call Jake Thompson. Leslie Dyer is absent, Don Young, myself, Pam Ellie, Marjorie Stratton, town manager. Deputy time five thirty minutes. Approve the agenda. We have one addition correct nine B donations. That's it. I move, we approve the agenda as amended. All those in favor. So raise your hand.
Out of habit.
I have number three, approve the minutes from the July fifth, two thousand twenty-two support meeting.
So.
Second, all those in favor. I was in Newswire. Number four, approved and signed treasures warrants. Number three.
So move.
Second, all those in favor. What's the sad number eight? School, just kidding. Number five, communications Hurricane Island Center for Science and Leadership. So. They're asking for. The property taxes that they were paid, they paid assess. Years two thousand seventeen through two thousand twenty.
But they sent this one in last year and it was too early, right? So they just had to resend it now.
Right, but we're still waiting on the courts to decide if they're an owner, correct? That's so I, they can ask for this all they want. I'm not gonna.
Maybe the only thing I'm obsession of is just a few buildings. So that's all we can abate. Isn't that what we thought at first?
Right, but until we have.
Right.
Clarity on if they're an actual owner or not, which again, my point of view, they're less see, they can't be in owner. They shouldn't be entitled to abatement. I don't know what else. I don't know what else did they want an answer.
Well, well, they want the abatement. I'll, I'll contact. I'm not really, excuse me, I'm not really up to speed on this. As you know, I haven't been here, but. I can call David Callum and I'll talk to Wes about it.
Yeah, just let Dave know that they've sent us a letter to asking for.
I'm pretty sure he knew this was coming.
This lot of, just that they've asked for it. They've now asked.
Last year.
It's what now, three full years, three full tax year. Wes.
Wondering your part of the lease might be they have to pay the taxes.
It's in, it's in their lease, correct?
They're responsible for it and asking for abatement. Not out of place.
It's not out of place, but again. I need the course to tell me if they're an owner or not. If they're not an owner, then. They can't ask for.
Also. Some of the years that they want abatements was in question, like.
Right.
Two thousand seventeen. I mean, they.
They were not a scientific organization at that time or in two thousand eighteen or nineteen. Maybe they are now, but even in nineteen twenty, they were not.
Right.
So how far back can they go? So either way, we still need to hear from our lawyer. I believe the final question from the court is not decided, so.
Or you're on the assessor, someone's gonna pick the final decision on us.
Any other discussion on this topic?
No.
All right. Any other questions from the audience? All right. Number six, speakers from the floor.
Marjorie asked me to come for the planning permission. Be on the agenda.
I'm sorry, Wes, did I have to do it?
It was Friday, Friday afternoon, long week. I.
We had been discussing. The. Amendments to the land use ordinance. Put forward by the planning commission.
Yep.
And, and then we were discussing that, well, I guess it is primarily Ellen as part of the planning commission. Asked for us to hire a planner to work with them. So. Our discussion was around, well. We're going to hire a plan, a planner to work with. The planning commission, then should we wait and? You know. Put things forward, put that on hold. And when I said, well, to Wes, I think what I said is maybe you need to come and state your case to say. That. You know, to paraphrase that they've been working on these amendments for some time. And they'd like to get, you know, they would like to move forward with these amendments.
Okay. So do we need a planner?
Well, I, I mean, who knows? I mean, it's.
We're gonna have someone just go through and review and see if they're all still matching state statutes, right? And stuff like that.
But the problem is with planner who's not familiar with ordinance, it's gonna take a while for them to get up to speed. And I mean, we've had input in the past from. Different experts whom their suggestions haven't actually been very good in the whole scope of them.
One of my quest, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Well, I mean, Mark, in my conversation with Marjorie, I mean, she had a great idea in that. What we're presenting ought to be broken up into about a half a dozen different articles. So people. You know, if they disagree with one, it can get voted down, but another one can move forward. I mean, some of them. I think probably everything on there I have voted in favor of, but some of them. Aren't terribly important. They seem the kind of redundant that Marjorie brought up the.
Well, I was trying to really focus in on what the amendments they're requesting. And one of them is a. You're not calling it a dangerous building. You're calling it a. I don't know, abandoned structures or something like that. And after reading through that, my problem is that there's already law, state law. That addresses those situations. And we've had a couple of situations here with dangerous buildings. And it's a process that's very specific in the law. And it's the Board of Selectmen that brings forward the action. If there is a structure that is unsafe or unstable and needs to be stabilized in some way, it's dangerous. Then this, and we've used an attorney in the past because the process and the timing is very specific. And it's very specific about what you need to say. In the, so I guess my point is, I don't wanna belabor the point, but. That section that the planning commission is putting forward, I feel is redundant because there's already in the statutes. A very similar. Process. I don't think we need that in our land use ordinance. In other words, because it's already one. I think that.
But if, I mean, again, if we separate things out, so it can be discussed individually. And then, then the ones that move forward can be voted on at the same time.
So I can ask, for instance, I can ask Maine Municipal Legal about that particular one, and that's free. But the other, the other ones, I was just thinking. That we should put through either a, a planning specialist or an attorney, a land use attorney to say, look, are these. Are these viable? Can, can we add these to our land use ordinance? Legally, I don't know if that's the right word, but I'm looking for.
Could they be challenged legally?
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's smart to at least put them through either a professional or an attorney, a land use attorney before. Of course, before they're adopted and anything, of course, that. Affect shoreline zoning has to go to DEP shoreline zoning to be approved. So. To me, it's just like, well, let's jump through that hoop before we.
Yeah.
Have the public hearings.
We should do that before. Yes.
I mean, I had sent stuff along with the DEP and gotten absolutely no response. I mean, I know. I remember Andy telling me that he had told the DEP that they should only talk to him. Which was a little frustrating. I mean, we're the committee that's trying to come up with the proposed wording of, you know, and I, I just. Thought that getting these feedback to our committee would be helpful. And, I mean, I, I think Marjorie has better things to do than to be trying to.
Right, but we still want the town manager to be involved in that.
Oh, absolutely.
Just so we have all that information.
I know, but, but, but again, when Andy was there, he was trying to micromanage it, you know, and, and it just. Again, when I met with Marjorie the other day and her, her idea of splitting these things up into different articles, but perhaps having them at the same hearing was great because it just.
So.
It's all one and one, if someone doesn't like one part of it, they have to go.
Everything, yeah.
That does seem to make more sense.
Oh, those large, those large sections.
Yeah.
The one about the business, home occupation, and the one about the housing should be separate articles. And then the, the so-called house, I call them housekeeping things. Those should be another article, maybe.
I agree, we should put everything through a review first from a legal standpoint.
I'll work on that. And then also I have a, a, a Zoom meeting with Midcoast Council of Governments. I don't have any experience with. MC cog, they call it. I did work with Greater Portland Area Council of Governments and we hired. I mean, they have the capacity to hire out, if you will, their people to assist towns. I mean, that's one of their purposes to assist towns with these kinds of, you know, land use ordinance advice. I have a Zoom meeting with. I can't remember his name. A guy tomorrow to talk about if there would be an opportunity for us to work with them or if they had somebody that would work, be able to work with the town. And our, our planning commission.
Don't we, are we a part of a county?
Is that, is it, did Mickhead change their name?
Yeah.
That's what it is.
Okay, all right.
Midcoast Council of Governments.
We should have access.
Yeah, we got so many hours a year from that.
Right.
Exactly.
Yeah, but they, they were called Mickhead and they changed their name. I remember Andy telling us that, like, this year they changed the name.
Right, and all of those things, I'm still, you know, trying to meet people and get up to speed with, you know, who does what.
Okay.
And the midcoast to it.
By joining, we're supposed to get ten hours a year, three or something. I can't remember what the number was.
I mean, it shouldn't take that long.
Go through. I can't remember if it was ten hours either. It could have been less than that. I can't remember the number. It was a while ago when we discussed it. I know there's a certain number of three hours.
Yeah, but it shouldn't, it shouldn't take that long to go through our ordinance.
No, not what we've got.
I'm assuming that each one of these items that were reviewed here individually, there's a group point side on anything.
Yeah, we have to have a public hearing and.
Yeah.
Well, we have to look at them instead of public hearing.
And then have it come out there. But I think we should have a consensus sometime.
Yeah, we'll, we'll look at them again when they come in and individual form instead of the whole thing. We've seen them.
Yeah.
Bulk.
Yeah, that makes sense. Okay.
Anyway, does that sound like a plan?
Sure. Is there, is there a way for you to ask DEP that it's okay for them to talk to me since I'm the chairman of committee? I mean, it would. I mean, I don't have any.
Need to know.
Well, I mean, I think they were instructed not to return my emails, which is like, I send them something. I said, this is what we're proposing for housing. Do you have any feedback? And I don't ever hear anything.
Colin.
Colin Clark is the guy at the DEP. You know, I've only found your. Involvement with this, this helpful. No. I mean, we're, we're just trying to move it forward.
All right. Anyone else? Right, move on to seven, committee and department reports appointment, seven A harbor master.
Chairman was supposed to be here.
I saw the harbor ordinance and you want to speak about that.
Well, when he talked to me, he, he's just, his concern is that there's no repercussions for people.
For violations of the ordinance.
Yeah.
That's a good concern because obviously there's not.
Anything specific? Oh, people leave things at the town war. Yeah. And, you know, he bugs them and bugs them and bugs them and nobody ever does anything because there's really no repercussions.
Right. Well, I know the strats and the.
Well, what is this penalty?
It says we can set a penalty, but I don't remember ever setting, I don't think we've ever set anything.
No.
What are the, what are the, I mean. There's penalties for. Other things, obviously.
Moving along at the library so everybody can see it.
No, I'm just saying, what are, what are some penalties for, that we have for any other thing? I don't ever remember setting any, so.
Good question.
But if you're not gonna have a penalty, there's no point. Boy, I mean, there is a penalty. It says that we can set a scale. It's like, I know. So we should probably. Set one. I mean, I don't, I don't know if it's. I mean. I think he's just, the trailers and the traps getting left there. There should be some kind of a.
Yeah.
Of a, I mean. Twenty dollar nuisance fee for him, you know, to have to move the trailer. Well, I mean, if he moves a trailer and puts a lock on it, they should have to pay. Twenty-five dollars to have him go down there on market because it's, he's wasting his time.
Right.
To have to do it. I'm, I'm, I don't know if that's a, a good number. I'm just throwing them, you know.
No, I think, I think that we definitely have to have.
And then if, if he takes. I mean. If someone leaves their traps there too long, then.
Charge them.
Charge them.
That should be defined though.
Right, we need to figure that out. But those are, I think, the two main.
We have forty-eight hour time limit, so there is it's.
Right.
That we don't have.
We have to set a panel, we have to set.
Well, the traps in the parking lot have set up, put them there and then they go out. They don't have a forty-eight hour. In this from May, from June till Labor Day.
In the town parking lot, but there's the fish plant park.
That one is different.
Right.
Is it, is it?
And I think that's where he has more issues than.
Yeah, they've been pretty good downtown.
Parking, when there's no parking there, they've got to find a place to park, no traps with the. Yeah, I mean, I, I, but I think that he has the issue with the trailers and the traps.
Right.
More on the fish plant warp than, I think maybe on the town where people do put them there the day before and put them on the next day or. But they're not supposed to. They're supposed to just put them there.
Since the fish plant was forty-eight hours.
Right, but I think people. Have them there for weeks.
Yeah, yeah. It should take you weeks if you've got them ready to go, right?
All people take them up and just leave them there.
All right, so it's more taken up than setting out.
I guess, I, I think, but we'd have to ask Jimmy, I guess.
Well, you know, this is going, this has been going on forever. I mean, if you really want to implement something, Jim would have to send a notice of violation.
Right.
Tell what the violation is and tell what the, the amount. The fee or, you know, how much, how much the violation is gonna cost this person. And if it goes on, and this is per day. And then, and then he'd have to follow up. If the person didn't move whatever it was, then he'd have to try to collect it. You know, it's, it's a cross, well, a warning and a sending a notice of violation by. Certified return receipt, you know.
Can we do just a sign with the hours allowed and the violation for not having it to save all that or not?
We can. It ends up in the harbor.
Yeah, most, I do just get from overboard. But I think he also mentioned there's an issue with, he's not allowed to move other people's traps or he's a lob, commercial lobsterman or something. I don't know.
Oh, well, I've been through that before. I mean.
I would think that if they're on land, it's different than if they're in the water.
DMR told me that if we wanted to get traps out of the way that have been there for six months, then we had every right to get them the hell out of there.
About forty-eight hours.
Yeah.
Well, it's the ordinance that's enforcing the ordinance, so it should be the same.
But if the ordinance is in violation of state law, then. For the state law.
But if she, if she's talked to the ring control and they said.
Is this gear on land or gear even in the water?
No, I mean, I think.
On land, okay, all right. I mean, that makes sense. It's not in the water, so. And we have the section here penalty. It's, you know. Any of the violations. But it sounds like. Shall be considered misdemeanor and punished by a fine not exceeding the amount in the fee schedule, which of course we haven't set. Each day the violation is permitted to exist beyond the limits above described shall be considered a separate offense. Fines should be delivered by the harbor master payable to the town violating. Unpaid fines shall be collected through Rockland District Court.
It don't take one or two before that would happen.
It wouldn't take, it wouldn't take long.
No.
One or two people got written out.
Yeah, I don't know. How do, how do we go about?
I always thought there was a fee schedule, you know.
Can we, can we have that on the, can we figure out how we do that for the next meeting?
It's something we would have to, we change the ordinance and then we have to have a public hearing. You can remember when people, what they, when we thought we were gonna.
No, well, this is, this isn't about warrants.
Yeah, just remember that. No, I'm sorry.
Go ahead. If Marjorie thinks there's already one, then we won't set one.
I believe if, if it says in the ordinance, it's likely that we won't have to have a public hearing or town meeting.
That's correct.
Whatever you want now.
Okay.
That's correct.
The town gave you, the voters gave you.
Black and white, right here.
That's true. All right.
Yeah.
So, so we're gonna have to, all right, so.
We have to figure out what fees are.
And hopefully maybe Jimmy could be here to give us some idea of what. He thinks exactly the biggest issues are that we, I mean, is it traps? Is it trailers? Is it?
Probably both.
Well, he had, Nellie was gonna get, and Nellie might be, she's gonna get some locks. So the trails could be taken off and locked up up to the.
Behind the, no, behind the, behind the old town.
That has been done and myself, Jimmy and Will all have keys to that.
Okay.
Have they been used yet?
Um, I think he may have put one trailer back there, yes, but I'm not sure. I, it, there's nothing there now.
Well, I have noticed there aren't any in the grass area where they would cause them a lot of problems.
Well, probably if he took one and locked it up, then people probably heard about it and they're like, I'll get mine out of there.
Yeah. All right, so what do we do to get a fee scheduled? We have to have a.
We have to put it on the agenda and discuss it.
For the next.
Well, hopefully maybe Jimmy could come and, I mean, I would think if you had. Like five dollars for every twenty-five tracks down there or fifty tracks. I mean, you wouldn't want to charge a dollar. Or would you charge a dollar a trap? Or I don't know how you do it. So maybe that's something that Jimmy has an idea.
Had one in the past.
Big enough that gets the. Dollars, not gonna do it.
But if it's, if it's a dollar a day and they're there for ten days, that's a hundred traps. It's a thousand dollars. That's.
Right.
You're gonna get.
That's gonna do it.
That's gonna get someone detention.
I think it's gonna have to be so much for who's, you know, if you had twenty traps and I had ten, would have to be however long left them there. So much a day, so much after forty-eight hours. Doesn't matter if you have one or ten.
Maybe there's already something that hopefully about, that we just haven't never seen.
Yeah, if, if there happens to be a fee schedule on there, please let us know, but I, I don't think we, I don't think.
I don't, we never set one. We've never, in the last five years. But yeah, we should, we'll put that on the next agenda.
Well, I have to say that there's not much point in having an ordinance if we're not gonna. Do what we have written.
No, I agree that if there's no punishment, then.
What's the point in having it?
I would be all of it.
So.
All right. Move on to seventy, downtown project final meeting size.
So I asked, remember at the last meeting, they had those maps on the. Screen. We didn't have them and I just wanted to make sure that they were added to the minutes.
Good.
Because. We just saw them on Zoom, on the screen. So I don't know that you have to take any action. There was a consensus to accept. These designs. Elizabeth, is that your recollection?
So even this. The realignment of windy way and the burnt out crosswalk option that, was that concluded last time? I don't remember.
Well, they had to take it out because of the. Because of the insect, too much in, of an impact.
Can't make a raised crosswalk for two.
Okay, so that's why they moved it up.
So they're still gonna, we're still gonna have a raised crosswalk for the movement from, okay, to there is the new location, is that correct?
That's the speed hump option, but then they said that it is only recommended on a grade of less, eight percent or less, and it's a ten percent.
Yeah, I don't think we'd wanna have a speed bump on the hill. No, that doesn't seem like the greatest idea. The one right in front of the light office, would you?
Oh, there it is.
Right, which, but they're saying they can't put it there, right? Well, they can't have it aligned with the crosswalk.
Isn't that what they're saying?
So they'd have a speed bump before the crosswalk?
Yeah, the speed, the speed bump would be up the hill from the crosswalk. It'll be like in between the two crosswalks. Oh, that's what they have written here.
Oh, that's for that, that's.
This would be this.
See it, halfway up the hill, three quarters of the way up the hill. That says speed bump option, speed down.
Yeah, I don't know if that's gonna work.
Escape on here?
We have, we have the big one in, on Main Street, right? On the big crosswalk.
There's gonna be, there's already two. There's one planned.
Right, and then down by.
And then across, across from the grocery store or going to the grocery store.
The road's gonna be a little bit narrower now on that corner. So you would think that would be a natural. Kind of. Place people hit the brakes.
You think, but they don't.
But I mean.
Come around that corner, skip the hell out of there.
They could move, could they move, they could move it. They could move it down in front of go fish area because they just have to be around the corner, right?
They could probably line it up on that other side. They could probably make that other sidewalk a raised one, maybe.
Put it in that crosswalk there.
This one?
Yeah.
I would think they could probably do that.
Cause you really don't want it in the middle of the hill.
No, I agree with that, but I think part of, at least my thought was that you want people to slow down as they're coming to that corner.
Right.
Where like Fox on Electric isn't across from the bar.
Like at the top of the hill. You could probably do it.
Then you go over it and you just speed back.
I mean, if you're going down that hill, you're gonna obviously be speeding up anyway.
Right.
But if you have it around the corner, it seems.
Man, I don't think you should have it up the hill.
Have it.
Suggesting it now.
No.
I've almost been over there several times. It's terrible. In the crosswalk.
Why doesn't the car? Is that two crosswalks there? What, what's the two red things?
I think that's just to show where the truck is gonna be.
Which one are you looking at, Jake?
That one. See the, yeah, why is it?
I think it was, they were talking about raising that one.
Yeah, so if we have a raised crosswalk there, there's something they could do that, isn't that, doesn't that get us?
I think it's, they can't do a raised crosswalk.
Yeah, said that, yeah.
I like it. Vehicles will bar my own.
Travis, can we measure if we can look into alternative methods such as return?
All right, so there, why, why, why does, why does the crosswalk have to be there?
Why could, I guess I'm. There's one kind of there now, right? Theory.
Sort of, but everyone walks across the road to the sandbar, not to that sidewalk.
Yeah, I know.
Well, then you have a couple of alternatives.
If you put the sidewalk.
Right here.
Down at the end of those double yellow lines. Yeah, across there. Then you have to cross the other sidewalk. I mean, it's the same idea. Cause that sidewalk's gonna go right into the fountain, isn't it where it is now?
Pretty much.
So why wouldn't you move it down to have it going into the, in this other intersection?
Oh, that has anything to do with the parking spot. Okay, can you not come out and tell them to a crosswalk?
I have no idea.
Well.
No, those.
Cause then if you move it over there, you'd be on the flag ground and you could have that one raised maybe, but maybe you can't have a.
I don't know. There's just a couple of options at the bottom, alternative methods. Suggested.
Do you, so do you have comments back to the engineers then?
Man, we can't do it. We can't do it. So I would.
Yeah, is, is it possible to move the sidewalks so it's not, you're not walking right into the fountain? Is it gonna be a side, that's gonna be a little sidewalk piece that goes up towards the mountain there? Is that what that is? So what are they doing with the fountain, moving it?
What about the sidewalk that comes from Atlantic Avenue?
Yeah, I know, cuz it stops, you know, before the fountain goes this way, but it looks like they're extending it up the hill a little bit, so the crosswalk can come over there. Meet the sidewalk. I don't understand. Cause the fountain's right here, isn't it?
Yeah, I think it's.
Yeah, it's like right there. Not very much. The, the flowers are almost in the road, aren't they? So they're gonna have to bump out into the road to make the sidewalk, is that what they're doing? Alright, so. That's the only part that I don't quite understand.
They're saying if, if they were to, I think that's what I'm saying, is if they were to put in a raised side over there, move it to that new location, but it's not recommended because. It would potentially cause vehicles to bottom out and, so I think. If we just ask them to, alternative methods, as they mentioned at the bottom. To get people to slow down when they're coming down the hill.
Yeah, one of those.
And that's better than nothing.
Speed, wear signage or flashing. Yellow light or whatever.
But I don't wanna hold up anymore.
Nope.
Well, I would think that. If it's in the bid process that you wanna sidewalk, it wouldn't matter if you moved it. Five feet, it's not, you shouldn't change the cost of anything.
No, but it's more about if, if you were to add that, you have to extend this, and then that's gonna make it more difficult for the trucks to get into windy way.
Well, I already thought it just that out.
So I. I'm fine with what's proposed here, knowing that we can't put in a raised sidewalk in that location. Does everyone else find that?
Eric? You okay with the speed bump on the hill?
No, no.
They can't put it there.
They can't put it there, no. They were saying that that's where they could potentially put it, but then they looked into that and it's not recommended.
It's ten and a quarter percent grade and you can only do it at eight percent or less.
No, there's no sense to do that.
It's a launching pad.
Yes, exactly.
I think that if we, if we just go with their suggestion of an alternative method.
Yes.
Are the ones that they think would be the best.
Right, so what's presented here, we're all comfortable with, and we know that there is no raised crosswalk. These people, you know, level currently as well. Alright. Do you need us to make a motion or?
Seventy, we're in current status for.
That's all I'm.
Thanks, Eric.
Bye, Eric.
Wonderful evening.
Come again.
You too. We approve the design for. Transportation right, and I'm just working on that. Alright. Someone have any questions?
Yeah, I want to still have to get a copy of what, that plan is for the transportation.
Oh, that was a few weeks ago, we got that, right?
That was the preliminary, right, they're working on the final design, but yeah, they should, we should have a copy of the. Essentially, one way, one way out.
Is that what the?
See if I have any.
Question, I haven't seen it.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna check my email, I might have a copy of it.
We hope, should.
I'll get you.
Anything else on this?
On seventy, Director of Public Works.
Why, that would be me.
Alright, Millie.
How are you guys?
Good, how are you?
Awesome. I have, um, Mike Bunker is going to be mowing the sides of the roads now that the daisies are going by. Um, he's gonna be rigging his, his tractor up tonight. I believe he has his insurance already, I'm not sure if he has it in or not, but. Um, he said that he'd take care of that. Um, so hopefully within the next week or so, you'll start to see some, some trimming on the sides of the roads.
Oh, does that mean it's not coming out this year?
No, the, the gentleman that was doing it for us, um, has some cardiac issues going on, I guess, and he asked if we could find somebody else.
Oh, okay, that's good, that is a nice guy.
Yeah, yeah, he, he's very nice, I've talked to him a few times, so. The, uh, line strippers are MIA, I don't, I'm gonna call them again. Um, but they were supposed to be out mid-June and, and never showed, and I'm beginning to think it's a little, getting a little late in the year now to. To put lines down roads, but, um, I'll see what he can, what they can come up with. He usually returns my calls in three or four days after I call him, so. We'll look at that. I'm also, uh, looking at doing guard rail on the Keldwood's neck road. Um, I, we had s- almost sixty thousand in the budget last year, um, for a bunch of different places. Um, this is just below Larry Hopkins' house, and it goes all the way across, I think it's the backside of Vinyl Cove, is that the name of the cove? Um, that's really, what's?
Is it Mill River?
Be pleasant river.
It's, it's, it's both, yeah, yeah, it is. Um, so it's that, yeah, that first cove, right below Larry Hopkins. Um, it's quite a substantial amount of, amount that's gonna need to go in there, so I'll run the footage. For it and, and get the guy, um, working on it. Um, as far as Granite Island Road, um. Goes and Creed's Cove and all of those, there, I don't know what we're gonna do there, because there's just, nobody can come up with a, with a plan on. On what we can add there, where we can't get the depth for actual guard rail. I've been trying to find somebody that can do something with concrete, a concrete base to see if that will, you know. Will suffice, but, um, so far, I'm kinda coming up empty, so. Um, that is that. Uh, more to, more to tell on that anyway. Um, the pickup truck is going over tomorrow to get the new body put on. Nick's gonna drop it off tomorrow and they'll have it, I think, until Friday, just for a couple of days. Um, and then it'll be back and ready to roll, so glad to get that done. And, um, you guys spoke about the new truck, I think. Um, quote, at the last meeting that I sort of missed. Um, so I'm hoping we can bring that back up for discussion.
Well, I think the issue is that we only have about, uh, a hundred and eleven thousand.
Right.
Quote, the quote is a hundred and seventy-six.
Yes. Is there any way we can do anything with that, because, um, I think we're gonna be. I think we're gonna be in a bind this winter. Um, I'm not sure, and of course we can't get the truck back yet, but. Um, I believe that all the plow gear on the Weston Star may be too damaged to be used. Or at least the frame. Um, and the eighty-five hundred is really showing us. It's, uh, age, and I'm just concerned that we could be in a, in a pickle if we, if anything happens to one of the trucks. The dump, you know, the dump truck, uh, Rolie's truck is good, but we can't really put a, I don't really feel like we should put a wing on the back on that truck after the. Um, frame broke. Um, and that leaves us with one truck to wing with.
We can have enough snow to wing this one.
Perfect. That's the way.
I mean, interstate home, the sixty-six thousand, that's a lot of money, there's a lot to come up with. I mean, how much do we think we could get? Cause we wouldn't need the Weston Star anymore, correct?
No, we need the, we need the Weston Star, we could get rid of the eighty, eighty-seven hundred, the eighty-five hundred.
What do we think we can get for the eighty-five hundred?
I was quoted thirty-four hundred. Trade in right there.
That doesn't help.
But that also kinda tells you the, uh.
Yes.
The condition of it?
Yes.
Yeah. Um, is that an option? Have you looked into leasing one?
Um, I, I have not looked into leasing, because in the past leasing has not been, um. A fan, or people haven't been a fan of leasing, um, you know, we. You want to do like a lease to own?
What you're required to meeting, it's just like borrowing money.
Right, our one-year lease that, uh, to get us through to another budget.
Yeah, one-year lease, can we, can we rent one for three months this winter when we need it?
Well, the prob- the only problem I see with that, Jake, is the last truck that we rented from them was a piece of junk. And I ended up sending it back, not working. Um, we had trouble with it from the get-go. Um, the rental, the rental trucks are. They're, they're hard, they're hard shape. And truthfully, you're gonna pay more a month for rental than you are gonna be paid for a lease or, or a loan.
I think we should explore them one year, we should see what the implications are and then make a decision after that.
Yeah, I just, the sixty-six thousand is, I don't know how we're.
Is there any other equipment line that, that goes for anything like at the town garage, or is it just the one equipment line? I know this.
We, the one-ten is what we have in reserve, right?
Right, but I didn't know if there was any money for different equipment that we put in the budget this year that we could put off.
I don't think it was sixty thousand that we did.
Yeah, cuz sometimes they wanna buy like a bobcat, some, you know, like an attachment, maybe.
Right.
We could put off some of that and find the money.
Right.
If it, you know, if there was an extra thirty thousand dollars somewhere that they could put off, right?
Wes?
There used to be surplus equipment available through the state. Any idea?
There, I've been looking, um, there's a website I've been looking at, Wes. Um, and they, they average, they have a lot of three-fifties, five-fifties, and then. The Big Max, you know, the eight, eight thousands, nine thousands, and so on, um, and they. I haven't seen anything that looks real trustworthy, um, pretty high mileage on a lot of them. And I, my only concern there is, if, you know, if we buy something that old, we're gonna just be in the same position we're in now.
They just pointed out, this, this would be a diesel, correct?
Correct, but it will not be a Ford with, with, uh, the, the issues that the Ford, is the Ford.
Eco diesel.
Yeah, the eco and the, um, whatever, I can't remember the name of it right now, but those are the ones that are causing the problem. Um, this, that's why I've looked at, um, an International versus a Ford. Um, the International has a stronger straight frame instead of an S-frame, and, uh, and it also. Doesn't have that, um, issue that the.
We would, we would run it at a high enough, high enough RPM.
Yeah, it doesn't have that issue.
Okay, that's good.
Yeah.
Still just.
I know, it's a lot of money.
We talked about this during budget and we thought we had enough at a hundred and ten, right, that's why we.
Well, we thought maybe with a trade-in, we, 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 we get to like one-thirty or something, right, like, and that was close.
And I looked at buying, buying the chassis and the body and all the equipment separate. And it was almost a, almost a year wait to get everything. And it was actually probably a little more expensive than it is, you know, with this full deal.
So, so is there, is there any, um, I know that all, a lot of other towns are having trouble finding drivers. Is it possible that Portland or some other big city has extra trucks, if they won't be using this winter, that we can. Rent off of them instead of renting, you know, some, is that, is something that people do?
Well, we borrowed that one from Union last year, but.
Yeah, maybe there's a surplus somewhere else.
Right, I mean, if someone had twenty trucks, they thought they could have twenty drivers and they can only find fifteen.
Right.
They got five trucks sitting around, maybe they would.
Make someone off the truck.
Right, I, I didn't know, I just didn't know if that was something that.
Um, I think at this point, we would like, at the very least, you look into a one-year lease, see if we can bring this cost down.
Yep.
And then we'll have to pick it up. I know this price is, is only good until the thirtieth, but, um, unfortunately, we can't. We don't have it in the budget, so we're in.
Right.
How much did we appropriate, uh, put into the reserve?
Was it twenty-five or fifty this year?
It's fifty.
Fifty, yeah.
That gets, gets us to one-ten?
Yeah, there was sixty, yeah, almost sixty-one thousand in the reserve.
Cause we thought this was gonna happen, but we didn't know it was gonna be sixty thousand dollars or more, right? Probably if we bought it two years ago, it would be.
Yeah, that's the price it would have. They were even telling me, um, that the only, cuz, um, this one also has the, um. Um. What do you call body, um, stainless steel, um, dump body, and I'm like, well, what will the price be if I just get a regular black steel body? And he goes, huh, he goes, uh, that'll save you two thousand dollars, paint's almost as expensive as the steel these days. So.
Yeah, like, if we just done this a year ago, it'd have been twenty, thirty thousand dollars cheaper at least.
It absolutely would have been.
So what, so what, so our options are either a one-year lease or going to the town and asking for sixty-five thousand dollars, so there are two options.
Or, or, there's a lot of big trucks in the Zilem that, uh, have we talked to any of them about contract file in the winter time?
Maybe we could try, I don't think there was much appetite for it. We've advertised for additional drivers, I've been in the past, and no one signs up for it.
I know, like, Luke didn't wanna put a plow on, on his truck other than to do his own little stuff, so I.
Right, yeah.
Same thing with Darren.
Yeah.
I mean, you get into plowing these roads, it's a lot more wear and tear than your regular driveways.
Yeah, I, let's look into the lease and.
Yeah, I'll, I'll do some, I'll explore some more options and see what else I can come up with there. And report back to you in a couple of weeks from, at the next meeting.
Cause I'm hoping that we can put it off for you, the prices might come down a little bit, you get a recession.
I'm scared that they're gonna go up more.
Is there any way that we could pay him like a hundred and twenty thousand this year and then sixty thousand next year, would that still require?
We still have to have funds, like, to match it, I think, yeah.
I was just wondering if that was something, if, if we start to go to the town, if we had a hundred and eleven.
No committing funds.
Right, yeah.
Well, let, let's look into some other options first, before we.
Could do a one-year, one-year note on the sixty. Pay it with next year's budget.
Well, you could, we, I mean.
We still have to ask the town for, but let, let's, let's look into the one-year lease, see if we can do that first, cuz. A newer vehicle that, that'd be sufficient for what we need, and then also we get to try it out and see if it's actually what we need, and then we can go back to.
Yep. Sounds like a plan.
Alright. If you, if you call someone in like New Jersey, are their prices cheaper if we pay someone to drive it up?
You're gonna pay me, fly me down, I'll go get it.
Well, I'm just, if it was fifteen, twenty thousand dollars, it would probably be worth it, so.
I, I can look out of state too, that's not, I mean, I just wasn't sure what I thoughts were.
No, let's, let's explore all options that we can think of, cuz that's.
I mean, if we can save thirty thousand and have someone go down and drive it, I, that's what, I have a buddy that works for a mayor of Maine, they send him all over the country to drive. Power trucks back when they find them in different places for cheaper.
Yeah, so let's, you can find the same, or similar vehicle somewhere else.
I, I, I will look around and, and see what I can come up with.
If it's any consolation, I saw a Ford pickup truck advertised today for a hundred and nine thousand dollars. If it's any consolation, I saw a Ford pickup truck advertised today for a hundred and nine thousand dollars, so. Vehicles are going, it's like a hundred and nine thousand dollars for a pickup truck.
Is that the Ford Lightning?
Is that, yeah, that's what it was.
It's gotta be the top of the lineup. They have one that's only any, we're getting off.
My, my pickup just went up for sale, Pam, you wanna buy it?
No, I'm all set then.
Alright, that's all I have, folks.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, well, seeing the old business, we want a nine, new business, nine, eight, John Frumer, I hope I said that correctly, boundary line agreement.
Hi.
Hello.
So, um, saying earlier, I got a bad summer cold, chest cold, not cold, but so I've got a mask on. I'll show you, I do have a face. And without a beard, right? Um, I own property in my own name with my wife up um, around the Boom Quarry. And also we have um, property in uh, Boom Quarry Preservation Corporation, which.
Can we put that over here so I can take a look at it?
Yep.
Absolutely, you can hold it.
So you can see it, I'll stand up.
Okay, that's alright. Um, so, this is, my property goes over here, that's in my name. This property is the Boom Quarry property. And you all already had, presented to you a boundary line agreement. John Arias is the butter here, relevant butter. You all had presented to you and then signed a boundary line agreement for this line, right here. Operative point was effectively moving from here, which is where some old deeds said it went through. To here, seventy-four feet over. And um, through a series of different things, which don't matter, but I'll mention them for a second. I had some discussions with Andy at one point, thought this was being done, kind of, they were gonna try and do it all at once. He, he split, um, that didn't happen. I didn't even really get notice of that meeting. Our house and our whole farm burned to the ground, so we kind of um, went in a different direction for the last. Six months, we have not focused on this a little bit, so um. Uh, what I'm asking for right now is, because it would be, it's exactly the same data. It's the same points, and I'm sorry that we, we couldn't do this comprehensively. But um, if we can do the extension, it's basically this line. It would be the identical boundary agreement that you guys have already approved, except instead of it being this line. It would be this line, and these guys Garrett Lee and Dorsky would write it up. The language would be identical, except the compass headings would be this almost perpendicular line. Um, and if we can do that, I'll pay for the boundary agreement to be done up on behalf of us and the town. And if we can do that and sign that, that permits me to also then work with John Ari and his people. To do some other stuff that I've gotta do to square up with the same lines that get projected. If we can't do that, it gets messy because then there's like zigzags and um. So it would be really, really helpful. I apologize for the inconvenience. So it's moving the line seventy-four feet, you said, on one? Seventy-four feet, seventy-four point eight-eight feet.
But the other point's the exact same point, right?
I believe this is the same point.
So if we don't move, there's like a little piece of land that's.
There's a gore is the fun technical name for that.
Here that you're asking for.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
I mean, what?
And what's it called, John? A gore?
A gore is um, when there's a, a piece of land that because of compass bearings and stuff like that, doesn't. Get um, settled as to who really owns it, you get a gore. And there are gores all over the place, little towns or areas, yeah.
I mean, I don't have any problem bringing it to the town to go on. I mean, we can't do it, obviously. But.
And what I was asking for was if, if you all were, would be supportive of it, then I'll spend the money and have these guys. Draw up the agreement for your approval and putting it through your, you know, to the town, whatever you want.
Are there any downsides to it?
I mean.
Is there any reason not to do it?
I don't, do you see any, I don't see any.
I mean, I don't even know what's up there is.
It's probably a bunch of ledge and blueberry bushes and pine trees if I had to guess. You know on the rest of the properties up there.
Yeah, and, and a bunch of old broken beer bottles and cans from people.
They're everywhere.
Yep, that's right, but it's, it is a, where you've effectively, by approving this line already. You've effectively acknowledged that that point is the new point, um, seventy-four point eight-eight feet. It would be great then to have the continuity all the way through for, for us as a butters with the town land. But also for us as a butters with John Ari, and I think everybody's trying to do right by John. Um, to make it easy for, for him and his people to uh, do some companions, so.
Is that the proposed line?
This would be the.
The new line? Where is the line now?
It would be from here to here.
It would be a straight line like that, so it's leaving.
So like this.
That's what I mean, I wanna know where it is now, yeah.
It's basically where my pen is, correct?
Yes, like this is not defined, so this would.
It would be seventy-four feet down to zero feet on the other.
I just can't see. Thank you.
Yep, basically what it is.
I mean, I have no problem, I'll put, I'll put it to the town.
Do we need to make a motion on that?
Like that, we just have to set up a special town hearing when we have the actual paperwork, right, Marjorie?
Well, I think that what the process would be to have John contact Gartley and Dorsky. And then when the documents arrive, the motion would be to move forward with the boundary agreement. Uh, for a special town meeting, so I don't, the motion today.
Would be a little premature, would be just.
Signaling that we would be willing to do it, I guess.
I don't, we don't have to make a motion though. If I'm good on your word, if you guys say that you would be supportive of it, I'll go pay them to have it done right off. And then present it to you and then you officially do what you need to do.
So come back with your, with your.
With the document.
Whatever you need, and then we'll proceed from there.
Beautiful, thank you guys very much.
I mean, that's what I'm assuming.
Is anybody good on that?
Unless, unless there's. Something that comes up with the lawyers, I mean, you, you know that before us, so.
Yeah, but I think, and, and Wes has involvements with a bunch of these people, I think, and I think things are good. And from that end, and then these guys have said that they'll put it, they'll put this document together and. It will be almost identical to what.
Except they're, they're not attorneys. I mean, the document needs to be created by an attorney, which you could do it yourself.
Yeah.
They've got the compass bearing.
Yeah, they could just, like what you brought us, the one hundred and seventy-four feet at three hundred and sixty, whatever. I'm making that up, but I'm obviously would say whatever that line, dimensions of the line.
Yeah, and then, and the rest of the line is exactly what we need.
So you can draw up your own legal document of you.
I'm assuming he's a lawyer, is that correct? That's what I assume.
So yeah, yeah, we're, we're fine with that.
So we, we can't guarantee the town will vote yes, but I'm assuming they.
I don't see why they.
There'll be probably nobody.
There'll be like, there'll be like, we'll, we'll have to pay Jeff Aronson to come and have the meeting. He'll be the only other one there, but.
Yeah, but you know what?
Yeah, I know, but I'm just saying, that's what usually we get, two people to show up to the thing.
I mean, that, that line you'd be agreeing to matches up with the eighteen eighty-one plan that Bell discovered.
So if that was what it was supposed to originally been, and.
If you compare this map to the eighteen eighty-one map. Problem was that, you know, Bell made a mistake, he didn't have that information when he drew the original plan of the.
Yeah, no, I have no issues. No issues, thank you all very much, and what I'll do, I, I will try to have it for your, the Marjorie for you all for. Two weeks from now, but given some foundation pouring and some other things that we're going to have.
Sorry about you.
Everybody got out alive.
That's good.
There, there, by the time the fire marshal got there, um, the firefighters had um. Moved stuff around so much to put the fire down that uh, they couldn't tell for sure. But what they're pretty sure of is from where, where they think it started, that it actually was some, some lithium battery. For that cordless tool, the chargers, they have really cheap chips in them, and those chips fry sometimes. Charging, and it gets hot enough, and it's a wooden, you know, timber framed barn with tractors and.
So it happened to Ian Adair, I mean, yeah.
It was exactly right, very similar thing.
Yeah.
And it's um, the, the fire marshal said that it had a bunch of situations in the state. Where they've been able to identify, and then they go after the, uh, the waltz or the manufacturer or.
So are those batteries plugged, you're, you're charging them and they're plugged in and charging, and that's when they.
Yep, they're supposed to, they're supposed to point red while they're charging, then it goes to solid red and it's supposed to not charge.
So you don't leave them plugged in.
You should not even plug in, is take home, and also, it's um, now apparently, there are some companies. That can, but it's not Hitachi, it's not some of the basic company, but where they're getting a little bit higher-end chip, so it doesn't fail as frequently. But it's a teeny little chip and, you know, if they.
And it's something you forget pretty easy if you had it.
Lots to wear.
I do it too. I try and remember, I log everything when I leave the shop, but.
Uh, you, I, I got a couple of people we work with who actually, different ways, but um. They've actually started putting in their close down notes for whoever locks up the shop. Everybody got out okay, so we'll build that better.
Yeah, there you go.
Okay.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, nine B donation. We have.
Oh, you have, yeah, you have. You want me to make the motion now?
Yep.
I'd like to make a motion to accept and appropriate six hundred twenty-seven dollars to ambulance training. Five thousand seven hundred fifty to ambulance equipment and twenty-five hundred to fire department.
Um, I was second that motion. And then I'll call for a vote when everyone's ready.
How much was the fire about one?
Twenty-five hundred.
So, you're, are you doing them all at once? Did you say ambulance?
Let me reread it to you. Accept and appropriate, six hundred twenty-seven dollars to ambulance training. Fifty-seven fifty to ambulance equipment and twenty-five hundred to fire department.
What about the swap shop?
Oh, the swap shop?
Well, I don't have a reserve fund for that, so I don't know. What it would be.
Would go into.
We've just been putting it against.
Okay, that's one. Alright, um, I second Pam's motion, all's in favor. Alright. That is in the book.
I like this one. That's sweet.
Alright, moving on to ten, report of town manager.
Um, I had, I'd been asked to get a estimate for painting the old fire hall. Or actually, it was Phil that I guess asked Dana Emmett, who is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I saw that email come through and.
So his estimate is twenty-four thousand dollars, and we just don't have that much money.
Can we do the two worst sides? I thought that's what we were talking about.
Well, didn't Hall Painting give an estimate for sixteen thousand for two sides?
But this is.
Right, this is for the whole building. But I thought his estimate from a couple of years ago was for sixteen.
Yeah, but he never did it, or we never approved it.
No, I'm just saying, sixteen thousand for two sides, and this is twenty-four for the entire.
Building plus minor repair.
However, I don't know where Phil, I don't know where Phil is, but I thought he had another. He told me he had, he had another bid, but he's not here to present it, so I don't wanna say anything.
Right, well, we can't really accept this one.
We don't have enough, even with. Maybe, maybe we could ask him to amend it to doing the two worst sides that we were looking at before, and it might come down to the amount. I mean, I don't know how we come up with the other seventy.
Well, I didn't look at the, I saw the amount, and I assumed it was just painting, but it says it said maintenance, so what were the minor repairs listed to say?
I had some boards, I think.
Watched the exterior.
It's not a bad price, really.
This is the other guy, isn't it? Yeah, this is the guy that um. No, he just gave me his card. Uh, he was at the flea market and I was, I was.
He, is that, is it Oscar?
They did John's.
Oscar, yeah.
Yeah, he gave us a quote for the museum too. He's gonna do the front of the museum.
Well, there you go, you can paint the old fire hall.
Well, maybe we, maybe, maybe we could ask them to have two separate quotes, one for the. Two worst sides and one for the whole building, so maybe we could get. Part of it started this year, I mean.
Well, twenty-four.
The side, the sides, I'm assuming the side towards the parking lot and the side towards the water would be the two. Unless, I mean, maybe you could get three sides and just not paint the side towards the Haven. For the seventeen thousand five hundred that we have.
This is the.
I'd negotiate with Oscar, though, I wouldn't just take the.
Well, this isn't from Oscar, this is, this is from Dana Emmett.
Okay, Oscar, Oscar's good, not on my cheat, it seems.
It's not gonna, you're not gonna get a ten thousand dollar paint job, I mean, that building's a mess.
The road will need to be collapsed, so one lane during work on front, and the parking lot side will be blocked till I work, so it's not like somebody wants to start right now anyway, right?
I would think.
It'd have to be after Labor Day.
Yeah.
Well, when they were painting the front of the Haven, they did it starting at like five o'clock in the morning and on a lift, so. They'd probably do that there, so they just have the lane closed until like eight o'clock in the morning, yeah. It was only closed when I went to Hall, I'm sure half the town didn't even know that he closed the lane of traffic.
Yeah, so they would start at six AM.
Yeah, that's probably what time they started, so. Yeah, but they might start early, because this was when the sideline is up, but like.
Have we, we haven't put this out to bid in a while, have, this is just a quote that a resident got.
Seems like it's kind of a Phil Crossman.
Should we put it out to bid, is that what we have to do?
We should.
If it's over fifteen thousand.
It's supposed to, so, I, we haven't gotten individual quotes before that are any less than that, so.
No, do what you need to do, right, well, we have to if it's gonna be over fifteen, it appears it's gonna be over fifteen, so.
Yeah.
Maybe, and maybe we could ask them to include.
Two, if, if, one for just, what, the two worst sides and then one for the whole thing.
The back and the side toward the parking lot?
Which side does he say is the worst and not?
It doesn't.
I would assume it, the side towards the parking lot gets the, all the wind and the waterside would be the two worst, but I haven't actually looked at it, just. Don't seem logical, but. The roadside might get hit with violent and stuff, and that might be worse, I don't know, a mold or whatever.
It doesn't say which one's the worst, this is. Any rotten clapboard will need to be replaced by carpenter provided by someone else. It's one thing that they're not gonna do.
Who in the, uh, our organization would have responsibility for checking and making that decision?
For what decision?
And for what side to be addressed?
We would decide, or who would recommend that, just so. Well, I think you would ask them who the two worst sides.
Do they still have, what is it, historic down street? Are they still inactive?
Oh, I mean. Some carpenter that wouldn't be bidding on it, you know.
I think we should, I don't think we should.
And then say, which two sides are the worst or?
So does that mean?
I'm assuming it's supposed to, but I haven't really looked at it and I would.
We take money.
They probably all look bad, like dances, so I wouldn't really know.
Yeah.
To me.
If it's rotten wood, that would be a hot.
I mean, you try to go with the intent. Of the vote at town meeting and if you have a specific appropriation and a reserve for the old fire hall. To me, it doesn't meet the straight face test to use historical sites money when in your budget. It says that that is for other things.
Right.
Right, yeah, that was for like the gallamander and stuff that was in that.
Yeah. Well. I think we should put it out to bid.
Is that something that you advertise in just the wind?
Probably. But if you go put it on video, we need to define what needs to be done.
Well, we wanna quote on.
Painting and.
Minor repairs to the whole building. And if possible, then.
Break it down.
Right, and if you could, I, I don't know if we can ask for, can you give us also a quote for us the two worst sides? Cause that's, I think we'd already done that ahead of time.
Well, the problem is that once, when you start a project like that, you never know what kind of rot's gonna appear and. I think it's difficult.
Yeah, I mean, is this something that we can wait and put another? Year in the next year's budget?
Cause we need what, about seven grand?
But it would probably be more like ten grand when they find clapboards that need to be repaired.
Right.
A board.
We could, maybe between then and then, we could have a good Samaritan give us their honest assessment of what kind of work needs to be done.
Right.
And then we have a better idea what.
I think we could. Like, yeah, like how much do you, how many clapboards do you think need to be repaired, how much, like just. All parts, right, then we, maybe put it in the budget if we need an extra ten.
Ten, it's probably ten at least.
What happens to the money from the rent that we collect? For that building, does that go into the reserve account? Cause that would be an extra six grand, it's five hundred dollars a month, right?
Well, if you, but you have, but you have operating costs for that building. Um.
Electricity and the D, yeah.
Tellings.
If we wanna put that on there right now.
Okay.
So you don't wanna put it out to bid.
Can we, can we put it on? Can we maybe try and find someone to go give us an opinion of? You know, how much money they think it's gonna need, new clapboards? I mean, cause this is just a painting estimate, we kinda need to know.
Painting and minor, minor maintenance.
Probably know what clapboards need to be replaced, they need to get up, scrape them.
Probably not.
Because they're old clapboards, they didn't replace them when they redid the building.
I don't know what to do.
Let's. And minor repair.
Yeah. Maybe we should put this on next time agenda.
I think we're gonna have to, it's gonna have to wait till next year unfortunately, cause we just don't have, I mean, we're talking about needing sixty five thousand for a new plow truck and. Now we need another seven thousand.
I'm assuming it can last another year.
It's gonna have to, I guess.
But it'd be good to get an update of where we really are with it.
Yeah, no, we should, and I agree, we should have a better estimate of.
Who do you recommend for an estimate?
I can ask if I see them, I'm out of town tomorrow, but. In August, I can ask some people if they can just give me their honest assessment of it, but. Agree, I mean, you get up there and you start scraping stuff and pulling boards like you don't know.
No, I mean, you're gonna have to ask somebody who does that kind of work.
Right, yep.
So.
But, so. I guess, who do we ask?
Really, just get different.
Is Tony around anymore, or is he always in Thomas in there?
But.
No, he's not here.
I just passed him today. I just passed him today, Tony Jones.
No, I didn't say for him to do it, but for him to look at it, he might be able to tell somebody, he's done a lot for me, I don't know.
Whatever.
So I, I am not gonna take any action right now.
Ask, if you ask people for quotes.
We're not asking for a quote, we're asking just to.
Well, what, well, alright, so you're gonna get a price. Right, you wanna know how much it's gonna cost, you wanna know.
We wanna know which two sides are the worst.
Okay, but then you wanna know how much it's gonna cost to do the two sides.
I don't know.
Right?
I think if we're gonna wait till next year, we should might as well just plan on having it in the budget to do the whole building, right?
Yes.
And then you're, then it's done, then it's done with.
Right.
Yeah.
There's no sense to do this, oh, can you give us the quote on half the building?
Yeah, because if they're already set up, it's gonna probably cost twice as much to.
Might as well just, might as well just do the whole thing all at once.
Yeah.
And it's probably, probably.
A little bit at a time, you might as well plan on doing the whole thing at once.
Right.
I was just wondering how many bad clapboards there probably are.
Probably a lot.
So we're gonna have to plan on probably being another ten to. Ten to thirteen, cause it's probably gonna be more like a thirty thousand dollar job. If the quote we have now is twenty four thousand, right?
That'd be my thought. Probably, maybe the, maybe the way to do it is to invite. People to come in and view the project and then give a bid on what they recommend. That would keep it simple. Maybe we could get the bid before we have our budget done next year, so we know, would that be the thing to do? Like have the bid in like April, maybe have someone have the bid process start next April, so we know. Roughly how much it's gonna be, then we could plan on or.
We wanna have the budget done by the beginning of April, don't we?
Yeah. But you could leave that one line, whatever, I mean. Cause you wouldn't be able to start it till July first with the budget anyway.
Right.
I don't know how to do it. Maybe, maybe someone will crash into it doing donuts and then they'll have to pay for it, we won't have to worry about it.
Um.
Yes, please continue.
Um, we got this um. Request from. Protect Maine's Fishing Heritage Foundation about considering a model aquaculture development moratorium. Um, we don't, to my knowledge, um, there aren't a lot of aquaculture applications in Penobscot Bay. But I, I'm not really sure of that, in Casco Bay, this is a real problem.
There aren't Penobscot as well, but Belfast.
Belfast, there's, yes.
Yeah, but what do we have out here, we have the ferry, we have Hurricane Island, Emily. And uh, huh?
With a harbor.
Right, and then there's one up, that's technically someone from North Haven, but it was up by. Soundstalls or something, those are the three that we've signed, that was another kelp one too, wasn't it? There's two kelp and then there was the one multi-purpose one for Hurricane Mary.
Scallops, not scall, mussels and.
Muscles and scallops and seaweeds and those. I can't remember, but they were all like. Ten acres or two acre leases, they weren't thousands of acre leases.
This might not.
Is this Crystal Chaney, is that who this is?
Agnesia Dixon and David Callen, who was our attorney.
Is, is this a request for just our area or is it like for a moratorium on?
It sounds like they're trying to get a lot of towns to adopt this um, model aquaculture development moratorium. Which is something that would have to go to town meeting.
Right. Well, we could, if they wanna present at our next meeting.
They're coming, uh, they'd like to attend August second, I'm just letting you know.
It doesn't really hurt anything to have them present, does it? But I, I'm pretty sure that this protect, protect Maine heritage or however you say it, the. It started by Crystal Chaney or something like that, cause she was trying to block um. There was like a thousand acre lease site down in Goolsborough for a bunch of salmon pens and different things and they were, they were trying to get it. So no individual or corporation can have more than like a hundred acre lease and. Before you could leave, like now, if you have a lease, you can just let someone else sublease it off you, it doesn't go back to the state. They're trying to make it so there was more of a review process, so that some big corporation doesn't just start leasing. Subleasing all these things.
Yeah.
And I think that's probably what this is and it's probably worth listening to, I mean, we don't want.
I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, I think we should have, we should listen to.
Very serious problem, John, there should be.
Or we don't want, we don't want some, some big site, you know, taking up half of the basin, I mean, right, or half of anywhere.
I think the big point is that towns don't have a lot of say in the regulation. If people that apply for aquaculture lease follow the rules. According to Department of Marine Resources, then they get that lease. And, and you can complain all you want as a town, as a municipality. And, and it doesn't do any good in our, in my experience working with Chabig with aquaculture and Chabig Waters. It was, it's just, it's awful.
And they were like twenty year leases too, the ones that.
Well, you have, you first have an experimental lease and that's just for a year and then you apply for the um, standard lease. It's a, it's a process.
Yeah.
But we would, Chabig would um. Object all the way along and it, you know, very seldom mattered to DMR if the aquaculture applicant was following their rules. It's almost like, yeah, it's almost like.
So why have.
You don't have any rights.
Why have those who have the leases out here even been coming to us?
What, it should, should be.
It's required.
Okay, but if, what if we didn't sign off on?
If we said no, it sounds like it wouldn't have mattered.
You don't need to sign off on it, there's a scoping session in the town and then um. There's a hearing, but the hearing is put on by Department of Marine Resources. You can come as a town, you can make a written statement to them within a certain time period. But they, and they will listen to you, but we and Chabig found that. Very little of what we said was of any consequence. Even though it was in Chabig Waters.
I mean, I'm, again, I think we're on agreement.
Yeah.
Come present, that's fine, I, yeah.
But I'm, I'm curious, what were we signing, were we just, were we just saying we agree with this application as a town, is that what we were doing?
I don't know what you were signing.
Like.
And he would bring it to us and it would be this big packet and it would be, the selectmen would have to say yes, we can use this part of the waters, I thought.
It was like, we're gonna have, this is where we're gonna have our kelp farm, it's located here, here and here.
And we needed to sign, it should be its own municipality, it is, I was gonna say, so.
It usually, it's the harbor master that fills out those questions.
Maybe it was because we didn't have a harbor master at the time we had to sign them, yeah, but they reapply this year, right, we have a master, so. Yeah, I don't know what we, I thought we had to sign them, but.
Emily and.
They just wanted to move, they had wanted to move theirs.
They wanted to move one, okay.
Was it Hugh?
Yeah.
Hugh, yeah, sorry, yeah, Hugh and Emily.
Well, certainly we, so far we have been fortunate to not have a huge influx.
Entity, right, the ones that we do have are small.
Yes.
But you said that our town lawyer is one of the people that wrote this up?
Yes.
I wouldn't divorce him. Yeah, I mean, if he's, if he's writing up the language, it's probably something we should investigate.
Yeah, no, I. They're welcome to come present to us.
Um, I have a candidate for assessor and I'd like to try to get him out here, but. He works for part-time for a couple of other towns, so his, his free days are Thursdays and Fridays, so I didn't really know how to handle that.
Well, we'll have to try to meet him.
On a Thursday or Friday, I guess.
That's, we need the assessor.
I mean, if you got, if we could have him come over on. Like the one o'clock boat, meet him at two thirty and they go back on the four thirty boat, would that work for people?
Just not this week and next week for me, but.
No, but I mean, like, would that, would that work, like, I mean.
Yeah.
Cause I mean, I, I could be around by two thirty and then they wouldn't have to, yeah, they, they wouldn't have to spend the night that way if they could.
Yeah, we wouldn't want to have to have him spend the night, I wouldn't think.
So what would be that next Thursday that you could meet, John?
Well, now that I think about it, yeah, first week of August is close week, so. I could do Friday the fifth, probably in the afternoon, August fourth, I couldn't do it.
I have guests. When is, I don't have my, any. Okay, I think I have guests in, in there, so you could do the fifth, did you say?
I could do the fifth.
I think, I think the fifth would work for me.
Alright.
And you say have him come out on the one?
If that would work and then we could have him go back on the four thirty or if they could meet at two thirty or.
Come out whenever he wanted.
Right, but could we meet, could we meet around two fifteen or two? I mean, if we said, meet at two thirty, then they could come on the one and if they wanted to come around, then I'd say meet at two, but I was just thinking the least. Inconvenienced for them, if they came on the one, they could go back on four thirty, but if they wanna come on the ten thirty.
Come, come over whenever he wants, right?
He can come over, but I was just hoping maybe.
Two thirty would be fine.
Yeah, I would think two hours would give us more than enough time for.
August fifth at two thirty.
Yep, if that works for him.
Okay. Uh, I have. Carl, uh, his references and some other people and things look good.
Well, hold on, before we move on, if, if he can meet next week, like, and the rest of the board can do it, like, I, I wanna hold it up just cause I'm not here, so.
Well, Wes Robinson has said that he'll stay on through the commitment, so. I mean.
So that's in what, September?
Usually August.
August, yeah. I'm just saying, if, if next week he says, oh, you know, next week would work better, don't, don't hold it up because I'm not here, so. But if, if.
Twenty eight or twenty one.
I'm gonna be there, August fifth will work.
Okay.
Yeah, I could meet, if you, if he says August fifth doesn't work, I could probably meet on the twenty eighth or twenty ninth.
I have no problem with it.
I don't know about Leslie's and Pam's schedule, but.
I'll see if that works for him.
Yeah, I mean.
August fifth, okay. Um. So I got the, an email from Patrick Polkey, he's the um. Interim sheriff, right?
Yeah, cuz it.
Interim sheriff.
Who's that?
Pat Polkey. He was the chief deputy, so now he's the interim sheriff.
Tim Taylor has gone to Rockland. Oh, right, right, I saw, yeah.
And this is an elected position, right, so we have to have an election?
I think so, yeah.
It'll be, it'll be on the November ballot, I think.
Yeah. So they're adjusting our coverage so that it's just not one person anymore, it'll still be forty hours. But all of the deputies are rotating, so it'll be a different person every day. Or, you know.
Every shift.
Every shift.
Yep.
And the problem that I've had in the past with that is, is the follow-through. That, you know, a deputy will be here, he'll address the situation and then the next day somebody else comes. And the person that's trying to get information about the first incident, you know, they say, oh, well, I didn't handle that, you'll have to wait until, you know, that kind of a thing. That's the problem I've had with it, which I told the sheriff before he left and I told this Mr. Polkey. And it says this Paul Pinkham will be in contact with me regularly, well, I haven't heard from him.
What is the, they're gonna come. And still be at night too, right, they're not just coming, the shifts, we still get the same shift. Okay, that's, that's what I was making sure they were, just coming on the first boat, leaving on the last boat, cause.
Right.
That doesn't really do us much good.
Come off the two forty five the other day.
The car in the parking lot down there, not all the time.
So it's a different person for each, each shift.
You would think they would just do. Three nights out here and do their four shifts and then go back instead of riding the ferry so often, but. Whatever they wanna do, I guess, as long as we get our commitment of the four.
Forty hours.
Forty hours in the.
On the island.
Right. I know that there's a cop on North Haven that lives there, so I mean.
Unintended benefits and consequences. Well, I mean, that's what they're gonna do, what can we say, see if it doesn't work, then we'll, we'll know, right?
I mean, what can we do, we can't really force them and we tried and we haven't really gotten anywhere with them.
I was gonna review some of the harbor issues when Jim was here, but. Um, Kolowski Mid Coast Welding did go up and make some repairs to that thoroughfare ramp and welded some of the railing.
But he didn't, he didn't, did you talk to him about the ladder?
I didn't talk to Mid Coast Welding about the ladder.
Okay.
I need to talk with Jim. Jim, our harbor master, I don't know who it is.
Oh, no, the um, the, we, the board. Oh, no, the, um, the, we, the board. Agreed to, that we wanted a. Ladder on the float at the thoroughfare.
But who would build that?
And Chris.
Oh.
Then Andy was supposed to talk to Chris about that.
Oh, he's gonna build the ladder?
He said he.
And before we do that, we should get a price owner.
Well, yes, but the board of selectmen already agreed that we wanted.
A ladder.
Need to have a ladder, not just a little.
We still should get a price.
Well, this price here, that, that he, was seven hundred and sixty-three dollars for what he did, he's not.
Well, I had that done because it was a safety.
Oh, absolutely, we talked about it.
Yeah.
But I don't think that the railing up there is a. Is a pool thing, I think he built that one that's up there too, didn't he, the one that's in the middle that you hang on to, I don't know.
Oh, yeah, probably.
But it's not a ladder, it's just a thing that's. But I don't know, what do you need, where is the ladder gonna be, I'm not understanding.
Somewhere on the back side or somewhere on the float, so that when people fall overboard, they have a way to get out.
Oh, that's an issue.
Well, somebody fell overboard at North Haven last winter, Bill Travascus.
He did?
Yeah, and he was very fortunate to be able to get.
Out.
Luckily, there was a ladder, but he said he didn't know if he's gonna make it. And I said, well, that definitely should be a concern.
Yeah.
I mean, in the middle of the winter.
Yes.
Slip overboard, you're not gonna be. No, no, he got, when he got home, he was. Yeah, no, he was telling me about it, I went, oh my god, and that's why I mentioned it to you guys.
Yeah.
Whenever March, whenever it was, I didn't say that it was Bill, but it was. It was not good.
Uh, we, I, late this afternoon, I received, um. A possible letter of intent between the Vinyl Haven, Town of Vinyl Haven and the Vinyl Haven Water District. I just think this should, I should put this on the next agenda.
That's fine.
To review it and discuss.
That's fine.
I mean, it's just, it's too much for. This moment. The fire, I think I already reported that the estimate was twenty-six thousand. Um, we've, still don't have it back. And then unfortunately, our library director has resigned. As of July thirty-first. I guess the only thing I would, I would, I would like to just advertise for some temporary help. Uh, while we're advertising for a new director, that was at the request of the library trustees.
Okay.
You know, they'd like to assist with, um, finding a new director. Or, you know, at least talk to the selectmen about what kind of person that, that, you know. Talk about what would be in the advertisement and what kinds of things they're looking for, but they did say that they'd probably need some help throughout the summer.
Yeah.
So just advertise for temporary help.
Yeah, that's fine.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
Did the insurance company on the truck, they say why it was denied?
Because it was, um.
They always deny those, they'll come up with any excuse they come.
I can't, there was an explanation.
Normal wear and tear, if a head gasket goes, it goes. And you should have been checking the oil level yourself or something, I don't know. I'm sure they don't blame it onto someone else, obviously, that's what they do, that's how they make money, they don't pay.
Well, that's one, but we really think it's the case, we'll go legal.
Right, but for twenty-five thousand, it could cost us that much in legal fees. I mean, maybe if we had a lawyer send them a letter, they might send us half the money. But I don't know what the issue was, why they did.
Threaten to go and.
They might give you some of the money.
Um, I'm sorry, I didn't write that down, they did have a certain phrase, I don't know. I can't remember what it was. No, that wasn't.
Got a lot next time?
Uh, anytime I, I've tried to, uh. You know, with our attorney, fight with a insurance company, I've never won, so anyway. The parking ordinance, it was mentioned that you wanted to address the parking ordinance. Uh, but I wasn't really sure, so I gave you a copy of our parking ordinance. Uh, I'm not sure what you wanted to do with it, um, and then I wondered if, is, is it something that we want to. Wait until after the downtown project, or is it something you wanna look at right now?
What was that, I think last time when we were discussing having a planner, help us with the planning board updates. It was suggested from the downtown. Master plan, that project, that parking ordinances should be reviewed, because if you're making changes to the. Planning ordinance, there's some parking ordinances you might wanna update, cause they kinda mesh together. So I think that's why we were talking about the parking.
I would like to address the fact that people pulling. From the left, going to main, you know.
Yeah, they parked the wrong way.
I've almost been hit a couple of times by people doing that, what do you do?
People coming in the, in the exit.
I know.
It says it. When, when you're parking on the wrong side of the road, I think that's breaking state law.
That direction, I mean.
You know damn well, yeah.
You know, if you put one like near the telephone pole at the bank.
It was part of, it was part of a discussion about July fourth. And there's a note, need to look at the parking ordinance.
That was another thing, just cause people are parking on.
High Street.
High Street going up the hill, and it's just not safe.
Right.
Yeah, so we, we do need to look at the parking order at some point, it probably is not. You know, top of the list issue, but as we're going through the downtown project, as that's being done, we should think about updating that. And we're gonna have to put something in there as well about the sidewalks and using them, if you don't, here's your ticket.
We have enough parking where?
Especially now that there's like three or four vendors down there taking up four or five spots.
They're supposed to be in.
They're supposed to be in the back, correct. I know, that's another issue that.
Uh, that was brought up by one resident, saying, why are there people taking up ten spots down the parking lot?
They're supposed to be in the back where the tramps are.
Then the craps are on the way to the can do it.
No, not now then.
But we had. Along, quite a while ago, about people that are selling whatever, doesn't matter, and they take the front spaces. And so we said, they agreed that they should be moved to the back of the parking lot. They can still get plenty of customers.
They can still put their sign up by the entrance or by the eagle stand.
Somehow we need to address that, I think.
Well, I think the community really likes it, you know, it's certainly up to you what you wanna do, I, you know.
But if it's something they agree to, then they should. Just do that.
We should maybe put, can, can we, is Millie still on here? Is there any way we could get like two or three signs made up, let's say. Vendor parking and put them in the back of the parking lot, so maybe people would put trash there too, you think that would help or not?
Uh, with the staff out there, can I put the park in there?
No, I don't think anybody's.
I would take that with me. Yeah.
But they should all be in the same area.
I think that's all I have, once you have any questions for me.
See, my thing, are we onto, oh, we're knowing, you know, I was gonna say.
All right, move on to board members.
My thing was about parking actually, and it's on School Street. They're always parking on that sidewalk and someone has made a wooden mailbox and put it in the middle of the sidewalk, that can't be legal. What do we do about that?
Basketball, uh, boomed up in the middle of the road.
Right, I mean, but that's not on the sidewalk at least, but there's a mailbox in the middle of the sidewalk, so if you were trying to walk on that sidewalk, you couldn't.
Yeah, there's no.
It's like across. But they're always parking on that sidewalk, they.
Because they don't have driveways, so they park, to get out of the road, they park on the sidewalk and.
That's, uh. They shouldn't be parking on the sidewalk.
And like the Airbnb down on the very end, they were, what was the name?
Guiness.
Guiness, hobbies, they, they have renters and they park on them.
Right, but when, when that teacher was there in the winter, they parked between those and George Harrison's, there wasn't any cars. On the sidewalk, all until the last like month, so. The people that actually live there park off the street.
Right, it's not.
But then someone does have a mailbox out there, and I don't know whose mailbox it is, it's, it's on that, right in the middle of the sidewalk, you can't miss it, so. I don't know what we do about it, but we should at least. I mean, you can't have a mailbox on a sidewalk.
No.
And you shouldn't be parking on the sidewalk either, I don't know.
Don't they usually tell you like where to?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I want you to put your, yeah, yeah, mailbox in the middle of the sidewalk.
So I don't know what we do, but that was my thing, so, I don't know if we, maybe we could just put a sign. Somewhere down there that says no parking on the sidewalk, just to remind people or, you know, ladder, just go. Put a sign under their windshield, wipers, I don't know what we do, but that was my thing. I've always said we should just make that street one-way, go on one way or the other than that, people could park on, off the sidewalk on the street.
Yeah.
Worked very well. That probably wouldn't work out very well, would it?
Well, you could just go, I never, I only go one way down that street, I live down there.
You go around the East Boston Road up there, cause it's easier.
But it is, I mean, and then when the flea market, you can't get two cars down through there anyway, so. At least maybe in the summertime, could be one-way or something, I don't know, but we need to do something. If we're taking up parking ordinance, we need to.
Yeah.
Put something on there, both School Street, I didn't notice anything in there, oh, on the Norbly side.
On both sides of School Street, usually. Any person to park on.
So they shouldn't be parking on the sidewalk, cause they can't park there. Guess that's the Norbly side, I don't know.
Yeah, that would be.
Well, that's my thing.
Send those people a letter, tell them.
I don't know.
Park on the sidewalk?
I mean, that's.
I guess we send a letter to the property owner, because it's most likely people that are staying.
Put something in the wind. Wind, I mean, that doesn't help, yeah, maybe, just those five or six houses from Claim Shell Alley to George Harrison's, I don't know. Who owns them all, but just maybe just a gentle reminder that you're not.
From, uh.
So George Harrison, he, he parks off the street and so does Alan Ellisoff, and at the end, but it's those other five or six.
Which are probably being rented or it's summer residence. Yeah, why is there a mailbox in the side?
I don't know.
That's the thing that gets me the most.
Someone's gonna run it over because they're parking on the sidewalk.
We walked down by there on the Fourth of July to go home. We had to walk in the road all the way from the one-way street. I have, uh, I noticed today, when I came from water, or no, or whatever it was, um, wastewater. That somebody came out of a parking area over here. At the, um, arc from the back and backed out and then went really pretty fast. Around this way and out through, which would be dangerous if somebody's coming the other way. I was just curious if we should have a one-way sign so that you just go around the circle.
Well, we're used to.
Okay, because they, when they left that. It was going, they were going really fast and went out through there and I did tell Faye. Exactly.
Okay.
All right, so I just thought, oh, that could be not good if somebody was coming to the town office.
I think we don't have most of these problems for about nine months a year, though.
We, when, I remember when we put up the one-way signs. I don't know, it was, people were all confused about it.
I don't understand, how can you, how can you be? Do not enter and then one-way, I don't know, but anyway, I just thought it was dangerous. My, and this is another thing to do with the old fire hall. Um, on the Fourth of July, all the ballast is getting broken or rotting off and there were big screws on the bottom rail. That are sticking up and one of my great-grandsons didn't put his foot down, didn't, you know, just. And drove the screw into his foot, so.
I don't know who to get to do stuff like that.
I don't know. What's happened to?
Well, I know, I used.
Don't know.
You know, years ago, I always used to use Matt Frost. He has done work up there, he did the, didn't he do the front door and?
Is that something that the town crew could just go down there with a screw gun and take the screws out or?
Well, the whole thing's getting rotten, so I don't know.
So you, you're saying replace.
Well, the screws need to come out, definitely need to be sawed off or, I mean, you can't get up underneath, because it's not enough.
Where is this again?
At the way you go to the restroom at the old fire hall.
Oh.
All the ballast is rotting and either getting kicked out or.
But we should have money in the budget for new railing.
The railing wouldn't cost much to replace.
Maybe we could just, just try and find someone to do it.
Or if Matt, or somebody wanted to just cut the, saw the nails off, or screws off and put in new ballast.
I mean, somebody like, uh, my partner Nick would do it, but he doesn't have insurance and he just, uh, you know, he would just be doing it. You know, for thirty bucks an hour and plus materials. But, you know, we're supposed to have, uh, the workers' comp crap and we're supposed to have, uh.
Can't get waivers on many of those things.
Like, what about, what about like the Parks Commission?
Do the blinds, but he just did it as a volunteer.
Well, that's what I mean, could he volunteer, volunteer only once?
I don't know that he would do that job as a volunteer, I mean, he certainly does little things for me, we freaking come up here and take the trash every Sunday.
Ask him how much of a donation it would cost us. Is that legal?
Hey, maybe he could.
Saying someone can't improve town property, we could always say, oh, there's some extra lumber over here. And there's a donation, I mean, is that, I mean, I don't know.
Well, I just. Mention that, that Logan.
I think that my biggest problem is finding people to do that kind of work.
Anyway, those are my two things, which aren't too horrible. I could go down there with a hacksaw and cut those screws off.
All right, anybody else? I move adjourned.
All those in favor?
So we're meeting on the second, obviously.